Ms. Rubin, are you ready? I want to thank everybody for coming to the Monday, September 15th, 2025 City Council Meeting. Ms. Rubin, will you call the roll?
Mr. King?
Here.
Mrs. Sax?
Here.
Mr. Cooney?
Here.
Mrs. Wise?
Here.
Mr. Rock?
Here.
Ms. Marshall?
Here.
Ms. Weiser?
Here.
If everybody would please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Hey, first item on our agenda is to swear in a new hire, Patrol Officer Tad Wombs. If any other family members want pictures or anything. Congratulations. We are now up to the reading and disposal of the journals. We have minutes from September 2nd. Are there any edits? I thought she ended up sending them. Oh, maybe I just saw them for, okay. So we, we, there are no minutes then for, for this meeting. We will approve them at the next meeting. We are on to additions and removals from the agenda. I do have two removals. We have E and F, which were just discussed in the, in the Building and Housing Committee. I believe that there are possibilities that there will be changes. So Ms. Weiser, did you want to?
Vice Mayor, I think we decided to just handle that with the table and refer to committee at the committee.
So we'll table it when we, when it comes to the agenda item then?
And take them off.
That's fine. Okay. Are there any other additions or removals?
Motion to authorize the Beachwood Prosecutor Natalie Supler to handle the state versus grand prosecution, which is Shaker Heights Mini Court Case Number 2025 CRB 00669 on behalf of the City of University Heights due to a conflict of interest on the part of the University Heights Prosecutor and to authorize Ms. Supler to be paid at the rate of $175 per hour for any time preparing for and conducting a jury trial in the case, if that is necessary.
Thank you, Mr. Bryan. I will make that motion. Is there a second? To add to the agenda?
I'll second.
Second, Ms. Marshall. Ms. Rubin, will you call the roll?
Hey, Mr. King?
Aye.
Mrs. Sax?
Can we have a discussion? Do we have some discussion on that?
Well, it's just to add to the agenda, so.
Have the.
During the.
All right.
Aye.
Mr. Cooney?
Aye.
Mrs. Wise?
Aye.
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Ms. Marshall?
Aye.
Ms. Weiser?
Aye.
Hey, great. Are there any comments from the audience? I think if you could just state your name and address in limited to five minutes.
Hello, I'm Leah Davidoff, 3626 Cedar Brook Road. I'm speaking on behalf of the League of Women Voters to let residents know that we will be hosting a candidate forum for the candidates for University Heights City Council this Thursday, September 18th, at the University Heights Library from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM. And we will also be hosting a candidate forum for the Cleveland Heights, University Heights School Board of Candidates at the Cleveland Heights Community Center on Thursday, September 25th, same time, also from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM. And we encourage all interested residents to attend. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, as always. Are there any other comments?
Good evening. It's Mike Maliskis, 2592 University Boulevard. I just wanted to speak briefly on the sidewalk issue that came up in committee and then is on the agenda today. Just, you know, one of the other agenda items today is the state of our city roads, which are in terrible shape. This has been something that's been talked about for a while, but it certainly looks like we need to add somewhere between 1 to 2 million, if not more, to the repair program on an annual basis to get caught up for where the roads ought to be. And so on top of that, we're also talking about new city facilities, which may run in the 1 to 2 million range, just for bond payments to cover the cost of that. And so for the sidewalk issue, I certainly think that it's a great idea that the city is looking for ways to help us out. I myself was cited this year for some blocks that need to get re-levelled. But I do want to just consider if we are taking the costs on that we're currently being charged to residents and the city is going to take them on even some percent, that's going to represent costs that we have to cut from other parts of the budget. So, you know, I do want to encourage and thank you guys for doing something about the sidewalks, but I also would love to see some, some costs included so that we can really know what the impact is going to be and see where, you know, are we going to have to lose a firefighter to cover the costs? I mean, what are we really talking about here? So I'd appreciate, you know, considering that as part of a holistic view of the budget that seems to be it's going to be expanding pretty significantly or requires some deep cuts in other places. And so I just, hopefully we keep that in mind as we move this ordinance forward. Thanks.
Thank you. Are there any other comments from the audience? Okay, we are now up to reports and communications from the mayor.
Thank you. Today, Chief of Staff Deanna Bremer Fisher and I attended the 100th Anniversary Celebration of the Baldwin Water Treatment Plant, which takes water from Lake Erie and since 1925 has treated that lake water and brought safe drinking water throughout Cleveland and the eastern suburbs. Last Friday, we celebrated the 100th Anniversary of the commencement of construction of the current University Heights City Hall, then known as University Heights Town Hall. We celebrated with a talk I gave about the history of the building, as well as with cake tours of the building, and we issued a commemorative coin with the building as it originally presented, with the front door facing Warrensville Center Road on one side with the modern Mosaic City logo on the inverse. It's my hope that this iconic building remains part of the city municipal campus for years to come. Perhaps the next mayor can celebrate again in April 2026 to mark 100 years since the building opened. My thanks to Deanna Bremer Fisher and Alan Pennington for their work to make this event happen. Also last week, the JCU Athletics Wellness and Events Center had its official opening. I was in attendance on behalf of the city, as were many others, gave a proclamation marking the occasion to University President Al Mikyak on our congratulations and thanks to John Carroll University for investing in itself, investing in our city, and bringing the JCU track team home to University Heights. Coming up, the City of University Heights will be at tomorrow morning's Business Roundtable at the Heights Hill Crest Regional Chamber of Commerce at the Richmond Heights Community Center. The event begins at 8:00 AM with breakfast networking and exploration of local business resources from area agencies, together with speakers from 9:00 to 9:30. Tuesday is also the Heights Active Transportation Summit here at Wiley from 6:00 to 8:00 PM. Officials from the three participating cities in the plan, University Heights, Cleveland Heights, and South Euclid will be in attendance, as well as Shaker Heights. Residents from these cities are invited as well. The event is from 6:00 to 8:00 PM here at Wiley to discuss the benefits of active transportation infrastructure projects, give updates on specific projects, and discuss next steps. The event will consist of two parts, presentations and an open house. During the presentation portion, groups such as the Heights Bicycle Coalition, Caga County's Department of Sustainability, NOACA, and Burton Planning, the consultants who helped us craft the plan, will give brief remarks. The open house will comprise various tables where specific topics can be more openly discussed in small groups. This is an in-person participatory event, so there will be no live streaming or official recording. There will be numerous things being discussed at numerous tables throughout the event. This Friday is also the grand opening of Qdoba, the first new business at Bell Tower Center. While they already had a soft opening last month, the grand opening is this Friday, September 19th at 11:00 AM with ribbon cutting at noon, free burritos for a year for the first 100 customers, and that would be one free meal per month, I understand. Speaking of Bell Tower Center, the garage peel back began last week and should continue all month and finish in October. We will soon have a smaller, brighter garage at the former university square. This Sunday, September 21st, is the Fall Fest with three live music acts, including Faith and Whiskey, Jason Patrick Myers, and Yudisha Cup, plus DJs from WJCU starting at noon, together with food and vendors. It will be fun for the whole family all afternoon. The Fall Fest begins at noon and runs till 5:00 PM. Wiley is the rain location, and we will be watching the weather forecast. More information can be found on Page Eight of the Mosaic City Magazine. And finally, September 30th is the Town Hall Meeting on the proposed new zoning code. As I announced at the last meeting, the draft code is available on the website for public review. Sean Suter from ZoneCo will present with comments and questions from the public following the presentation. The event is from 7:00 PM to 9:00 PM at JCU Dolan Science Center. Postcards advertising the Town Hall will hit mailboxes any day. Thank you. This concludes my report.
Thank you. And up to reports and communications from City Council. The only thing that I do want to mention is that in the next four weeks, we have quite a few committee meetings, as well as town halls, et cetera. So there'll be a more robust report in the next few weeks. Are there any other reports from any other members? Okay, reports and communications from the directors and Department of Finance.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I do not have a formal report for the evening.
Okay, thank you. Department of Law?
I have to report to the seat, Vice Mayor.
We're up to Public Safety, Chief of Police. Thank you. And Fire Chief?
Thanks, Vice Mayor. A few items to report this evening. One, the Fire Department Roof Project has been completed. Just want to thank you again for your support in selecting the vendor that we chose. They were very fast, clean, efficient with everything, very satisfactory. So we're glad that that is finished. We sent out the monthly report to you this afternoon for the department. In there, it will also be a reminder that we have started our fall hydrant flow testing and flushing. That started today. That'll go through towards the end of September on the east side of the city and then move west as we get into October. Depending on delays from weather and incident calls, we hope to have that wrapped up by the end of October. And last, we have our Fire Department Open House, October 5th, from 12:00 to 3:00. I'll leave a bunch of these flyers on the table at the door, and welcome to take as many and pass them out. We'll send up a follow-up flyer with a list of events, but we have a bunch of new vendors coming this year. And then hopefully, weather-dependent, we will also look to hopefully land University Hospital's medical helicopter at the Walt. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions for the chief? Hey, Service Department?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. The only thing I wanted to report, just to give everyone about a month lead time here, on or about October 15th, we will begin our loose leaf pickup from curbside throughout the city, and that will go through as long as weather allows through December would be the hope with that. But just for planning purposes, about mid-October, we will begin our first pass throughout the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Okay, Building Department? And the Housing and Community Development? And the City Engineer?
Evening. I just wanted to update you. Last time I said the street repair program was supposed to start last week. The contractor delayed it until Monday. So Monday and Tuesday will be milling. Tuesday and Wednesday will be the intermediate course, and then they'll start doing their concrete repairs. So once they start next week, they're supposed to be on site until they finish. And the deadline or on their schedule, it goes to like November 21st. So let's hope for good weather so we can wrap it up. And then I'll be back to talk about the pavement program or report. The North Cliff Water Main Project, if you remember that one, that was something that was going to Cleveland Water for approval. It was a project the GPD had started, and it did receive approval, but we are, we decided not to go forward with construction this year just because we didn't want to run into a Salisbury end-of-the-season deadline and the weather playing a part. So we're going to look at going to construction next spring with that project. The CMAC project, we need to get a RFQ out. My company, Manik and Smith, they would like to submit on it. So I'm kind of stepping back from the RFQ, and Alan's going to take the lead and get that paperwork ready and advertising for it so we can get that underway.
Thank you. Are there any questions?
Okay, what project?
The CMAC Signal Project.
Oh, the Signal Spring. Thank you, thank you. Okay.
Okay.
We've got enough in the air. Okay.
Thank you. Communications and Civic Engagement?
Yes, Mr. Cook is out ill, and there is no report.
Economic Development?
Economic Development. I covered both items in my mayor's report. Thank you.
Okay, we're now up to reading and disposition of ordinances, resolutions, and motions. Letter A, Motion to Approve Planning Commission Recommendation from September 4th, 2025, to New Vista Enterprises, Jezu Church, for the approval of proposed parking setback on Miramar Boulevard as Phase Two of outdoor learning space.
Couple of conditions, just to clarify from the Planning Commission, Vice Mayor. Approval was conditioned upon the cutout meeting the roadway standards, and that Jezu have the responsibility for maintenance and plowing of the new paved area, and that the marked parking spaces, the new area, be approved by the chief building officer and the police chief before their install.
Thank you, Mr. Bryan. Would you like to present anything?
No, I'm Mike Supler with New Vista Enterprises.
I'm Megan Johnston with Jezu Parish.
Very, thank you. Was there any other questions or comments that any of the Planning Commission members wanted to make? Okay.
No.
Oh, Mr. King?
I just wanted to note that there were shade sails in their design, and we're looking at putting shade sails in at Walters St. and Park. So it was interesting to see the use in your design as well.
Ms. Weiser?
This is just for the cutout in the parking. Correct. This is not for any of the rest of the project. This was the only thing that planning, that planning considered. So I'd make a motion to approve with the conditions, with the conditions.
Thank you.
So moved.
Second by Mr. Cooney.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Ms. Rubin, will you call the roll?
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mrs. Sax?
Aye.
Mr. Cooney?
Aye.
Mrs. Wise?
Aye.
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Ms. Marshall?
Aye.
Ms. Weiser?
Aye.
Thank you so much for coming.
Thank you.
Hey, Letter B, Motion to Approve Planning Commission Recommendation from September 4th, 2025, to Drees Homes for Mr. and Mrs. Weiss, 2660 Milton Road, seeking recommendation for the demolition of existing single-family house and site plan approval of a new single-family house built at 2660 Milton.
Vice Mayor, just to clarify, beyond the condition that property owner in Drees Homes enter into a development agreement and.
Great. Would you like any, to make any comments or anything?
No.
Okay. Again, any Planning Commission members have any comments?
I was present at the meeting and did vote for it. We clarified, pretty well clarified everything, and I believe there weren't any major issues with the project. Right. And just to clarify, the BZA did grant.
Yeah.
Yeah, three inch.
Free and a half.
They had been, they had insurance.
Variance. Yeah. Okay. Yeah, Ms. Rock?
First, I was going to ask if there were any variances. So that was the only one then, correct? And that was for the side yard?
Yes.
I'm guessing the left, the right side?
Yep.
Left side. Left side. Okay. And then, it's a pretty deep lot, so I don't think you have any issues with.
And I think the reason is the survey came back, and it wasn't as wide as the standard lot by the three and a half inches.
Okay. You couldn't take three inches out of the house, right?
No. No.
Sure you could have, but it's, there we go. I just want to mention, though, that you do see window wells going to the basement, but it's an unfinished basement. So at this point, you do not need a variance for any lower-level bedrooms, but if the owner so chooses in the future to finish that space for a bedroom, a variance would be, or a special permit would be required.
I would note, Mr. Rock, we told them that at planning.
Awesome.
We were very efficient at planning.
I'm passing along the information.
Any other comments? Their motion?
So move.
I'll second.
Development conditions, development agreement.
And last.
Second by Mr. Rock and the band. Ms. Rubin, will you call the roll?
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mrs. Sax? Mr. Cooney?
Aye.
Mrs. Wise?
Aye.
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Ms. Marshall?
Aye.
Ms. Weiser?
Aye.
Thank you so much for coming. Letter C, Review and Discussion of Street Pavement Evaluations and Ratings from the City Engineer Brenda Magby. Just for the public's information, we, there was a very robust assessment of all the streets. It's actually highly technical. Ms. Magby, I'm sure will discuss that in her, in her comments. What will probably happen in next steps, and we'll discuss here, is that it will go to committee so we could figure out in terms of costs going forward and just the direction that we want to take this project. So first, I want to thank you so much for getting this done. I think it took, you know, from when we asked four months, which is a great turnaround for such a unique kind of situation we're in.
Right. And this is my draft. We are making a correction on it. There was a little miss under miscommunication between the 26 program, which is next year. My engineer who was working on it, he thought that was a set. So when we came and presented for the 25 program, we had 10 streets. And then we ended up going forward with six of those streets. So he assumed that those other four streets were going to be for next year.
Good.
I told him that that wasn't a guaranteed. So he is going to go back out on Wednesday and do some more investigations on those ones. That was one of the ones.
That was the one. So, okay, thank you.
So it was brought to my attention, though, one of the streets came in at 100, and it's not a 100th street. So.
Thank you.
Yeah. The resident was a tad concerned.
Yeah. So that was our, a misunderstanding. So we had started, we did the 25, 24, 23, and we were supposed to do the 22 streets. And we were gonna just exempt those ones from inspections since we were going, since they were newly being done or newly done. He started at 26 and went back to 23. So we did get 22 investigated, and now we're going to get those other four streets. It's Bush now, no, I'm sorry. Those streets are going to be Carroll Boulevard, Sabro, University Boulevard, and Framersham Road. Those ones are going to get looked at, and those numbers are going to be updated. So in the final report, all the numbers will reflect all the actual pavement evaluations. So would you like for me to go through the report, or do you guys want to ask questions?
So what I would suggest is if you can just kind of give us a little background on how this report was generated, because it was very different than what it's been before. And then maybe we can ask questions after.
Sure. So we used a program that is called the Paver Program, and it was developed by the Army Corps of Engineers, and I believe it's like the University of Colorado. And the program looks at, and we had to give, we had to put a lot of information into it, the street network. And then we went out and did visual inspections and gave ratings to all the streets. The program then models everything that we put in. And one of the goals of the program is to try to look at how to extend the life and safety of the roads. So if you put a little money into the maintenance of your good streets, the life of it will stretch out a little bit longer. But then once they hit that poor, very poor condition, it falls off a lot faster. So our streets here in University Heights, our average PCI, which is the Pavement Condition Index, came out to be a 45, and that 45 is in a very poor condition. So we have some good streets, but we have a lot in the very poor, serious, and failed conditions. So it's kind of like, the program kind of looks at, okay, where's the best way to spend some of the funds, you know? So I do, I would like to see some maintenance going forward on our street repair programs, just to give our good streets a little bit longer life. And so like the maintenance, I mean, I believe the Service Department does do maintenance on the street when there are potholes and they find failures throughout the year. They're there to patch those and take care of that. But another maintenance measure is doing some crack sealing on our asphalt streets to kind of seal up any of those cracks so water can't penetrate down and cause bigger defects in the pavement. So that's one thing we've done on our county road, county roads, but not so much on our local streets. So maybe that's something that we want to look at, putting some money towards crack sealing. And then the other maintenance, preventative maintenance that has worked into this plan is just doing thin overlays. I don't know if we're at that stage where we should look at too much doing that, because we do have a lot of seriously defective roads that they need a little bit more. So we have to, we do have to do some major, continue with our pavement milling and base repairs, and then put on good, a good intermediate and surface course over the top of it. So that's, so that's some of what the program is doing and calculating. And then it looked at, we gave it some budgets to look at. So if we continue using. we gave it some budgets to look at. So if we continue using this year's budget turned out to be a million and one dollars. So we used a one-million-dollar budget. And we gave it a little bit of a increase for inflation. But then if we just stick at that over the next five years, um our average PCI would go down. So more money is going into the bad streets, and we're not looking at our good streets trying to extend those lives at that budget. So we went from a forty-three down to a thirty-five. So that might not be the way we want to continue doing our streets, because some of those streets that are kind of on that, but on that bubble of fair to or they, you know, we have more streets going down than we have more streets coming up. So then we looked at, uh we, we gave the program, we said, okay, what would it take to bring all of our streets up to at least where they're at now, which is a forty-three? And it, it came back with a budget of over three million dollars a year for the next five years. Then our average, um our average score would actually go up to fifty-six. So, you know, that would bring everything above critical. And then the third one that we looked at was, okay, what if we just kind of maintain what we have and keep everything at a forty-three or better? And um that one came back with a budget of roughly like one point nine million dollars. Now, the one thing that this program does not include is we're just looking at the pavement, the base of the pavement and the pavement, pavement surface. We're not looking at replacing all our curbs that we've been doing. So it has, we didn't put in um how much more concrete curb work would cost. And I just wanted to point that out that we'll have to come to a balance on everything, but that's just one thing. We were just looking at the pavement themselves. So and then the streets themselves were um ranked as a high street, which had high traffic, a medium traffic street, and then a low-traffic street. So that also um plays a part in how it ranks and, you know, if it's a street that is at the top of the list or more at the bottom of the list. So I can, you know, I can answer any questions. We can talk about anything, you know, if I can make changes as we go along and before I produce the final, the final uh report.
So I want to thank you very much, and I appreciate the maintenance piece in there also, so we can get a, a good um idea of what that looks like. So I have two questions before I open up to other council members. So going forward, is this an actual visual every year? Somebody is going to be visually looking, or is it more of a electronic kind of?
Um well, it does recommend that you do repeat your visual inspections every three to five years. So not every year, but um like we did with this year, we could always, the streets that are recently done, we could give them a good rating, keep it at a hundred, so that um we're not doing any more work. And I'll tell you, um Chase, my engineer, he started out doing about eight a day, and he, at the end, he was like up to sixteen a day. He was good at like recognizing the, the distresses in the pavement and measuring them and moving on to the next section. So, so he did, he did speed, he did speed up with his, and we had one person that did all the inspections so that everything was, you know, from the same basis.
The other question I had is, so in appendix D,
Mm-hmm.
when there's, you have, you know, kind of the improvement schedule for, for the years, how come, and maybe I'm just reading it wrong, how come none of the failed streets are on there?
Yeah.
Um well, that's one of the things about the program. If you're if you're in, so this is more of um maintenance-based program. So if you're failed, they want you, like we, they don't want to put money, good money into failed streets. So that's the one thing that this program is a little um.
It doesn't make any sense.
I, I know, and that's like, I, I was like trying to um how to wrap my head around this and how to explain it. And that's why I think in my final report too, there's some graphs that might help show how um how the curve works and how you're on the good streets or fair streets. You know, you can extend the life of fair streets, but then once you get to a certain point, streets are, you know, full reconstructions are a lot costlier. And this program is kind of um not looking so much at that, or that would be out of a different budget, but like I said, we can rank and we could work off, we can work from the bottom up, or, you know, however you, however um the city decides how much money they want to put towards streets. I mean, I think we, we, we do need to fix those bad streets, because again, um rideability is poor, safety is poor with lots of hole, you know, holes and broken pavement. So um I'll do a little more research and see if I can get you a better explanation of that.
Yeah, even maybe when it goes into committee, if, you know, we keep this appendix the way that the program says, and then maybe a, a comparison of the failed streets first and the,
Sure.
you know, bottom up, like you said.
Yeah.
And Mr. Rock?
Okay, and it, my question was very similar to that as to why there wasn't failed streets on here. But I'm, I'm, your, your response to that, I'm confused by, I, I, when you say don't put good money after bad streets, if they're the worst of the streets, I'm not understanding.
Yeah.
Is it because it needs a complete rebuild, like
Yeah.
from the ground? Is that what failed means? And I would kind of figure it's, I, I get the definition means it scores a ten or below.
Right.
But when I hear the word failed, I hear
like.
like it's a failure. Something is catastrophically wrong with the
Um.
Is that's, that, so, but your response is that it would need to be a complete rebuild from the ground?
Yeah. And I mean.
The base is no good, is that what?
Yeah.
It's, it's not just the pavement.
Right. Right, so it's kind of like, even if you put a new surface course on it, you're still the, the base isn't strong enough. It's not gonna support it well. There's, there's major defects down there that water can get into, and you can, um, you know, it'll come up in the pavement and you'll see it at the surface.
Okay.
You're saying you don't even, it doesn't even enter into the maintenance category?
Right.
There's no point.
Right.
It's interesting.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, cuz I mean, I noticed on a couple of these streets that are listed as fail, you know, I've seen some singles, I've seen.
Yeah.
It, it, that, that's the problem.
Those are, yeah, bad streets.
But with that said, on your map, I'm seeing a couple of streets that have failed but are not listed as failed on the map. Like um Renford, Fenwick, Section One. Those are both red, but the failed means this should be gray. And I'm also noticing on the map with regard to the high, medium, low volume of traffic, cuz I had asked you that via email. And I'm, I'm glad you got me back to that, cuz I, I couldn't understand that was a priority.
Right.
You said it was traffic.
Mm-hmm.
But I'm noticing a couple of streets here that are high-traffic, like um Sillsby, Fenwick, Milton, um are considered medium or low. So maybe we need to look at that as well.
Okay.
Sillsby is a heavily-traffic road.
Well, Sillsby isn't part of our um evaluation, because it's a county rou, rou, road.
But on here, you had um across from Warrenville Center Road, a different color. So I'm assuming you were taking that into account. It's just on the others, there, there are two different colors on either side of the road, Warrenville Center Road. But I did read that, that you weren't taking that into account on that particular road.
Okay.
But I can take a look at some of these other ones too, to see.
Yeah. If you want to send me some.
Those are just one that stood out to me.
So we looked at it as, if it's a dead end or a cul-de-sac, we said, okay, those are low streets. You know, and then we kind of looked at um we tried to, we tried to decide which was high and which was medium. So if we did, if we didn't get them all, you guys are driving them more than I'm driving them. So if you feel like I did miss on some, please let me know, and we can re um rank them.
Ms. Weiser?
Would you say it's fair to say that this report is a base to begin to really look at how to put together in view of the money we have an approach to sort out the streets? I mean, I know using the program, you have major improvements in there. But I
Yes.
There's a couple of things, and I think um I know if a street is failed, I could have told you that. But it does not get a lot of traffic.
Right.
But the question that I have is that section of the street, then, is it possible to estimate its life? Knowing it's not getting, not getting a lot of traffic. In other words, it's a failed street, is it one that we have to consider actually getting into the budget to deal with that foundational work? Or we have a street that no one can travel on? Um I think that's more the question for me, because that's going to affect some of what we do.
Right, when we approach it.
And I thi, and, and some of these ones that are, were below satisfactory but poor, where we have good foundation, is it also possible to do um what we used to call a patch, where they just put asphalt in one area, which extended, I know the upper end of Jackson, they did that to it, and it actually did extend its life. Um maybe that is another way to.
Right.
Instead of looking at it at all as we were for a while, if we do a street, we have to do all the curbs.
Right.
Um and the cost of the curbs was more than the cost of the asphalt, which then reduced the ability to do streets on the pavement and um I mean, I think there's ways to go, but the report is what we needed to be able to really say what's going on. Here's, here's a baseline.
Yes.
Now, taking the baseline and taking what we have in funding, how do we put those two things together to address some of the failed streets, but also get other areas done as well?
Yeah, cuz that, that's the one thing. I'm like, this program doesn't fit us to a T, you know? So I think it's a good, like you said, a good place to start. It was a good eye-opening, you know, report to show exactly how the streets are looking and doing what we're doing if we continue it. They're just gonna, we're gonna have more of that lower end, so.
Mr. King?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Uh that, yes, it is particularly eye-opening when you put that option three and add up the numbers of eighteen and a half million dollars. Um but um as far as getting that baseline, it'll be, it gives us information now, but it looks like um uh the model, uh the forecasting will improve once we do it again in a number of years. So I, I look forward to, to that in the future. Um just an observation on my own street, uh Westwood Road, I was a bit surprised on its rating. Um it was, uh it was rated as poor with the PCI of fifty-one point six. It was repaved approximately ten years ago, and I was a bit surprised that it was already at, at that condition. And if it, if it is, I guess it gives us an idea of what we're, we're up against, but.
We have, I'm sorry, I have a quick question. Is a portion of our problem what we're specking the asphalt to, or is it just?
Well, that's what I was gonna say.
Yeah.
Um Chase found some streets that were done more recently that were not um as high as you would expect. Was it the material that was used that way? Was it the um craftsmanship of how it was installed? You know, there's a number of factors that could have played a part. So we can, you know, try and keep up with the latest specs and um just make sure we're trying to put the best product back.
Yeah, so before, you know, I um call on Ms. Sax, we have to really now make sure, and we're depending on you for the best bid, you know?
Yes.
Lowest doesn't mean best all the time, so, yeah. Ms. Sax?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Thank you so much. This is really what we need. Um the residents have been, and rightfully so, uh making us very aware of uh the condition of our streets, which at the very basic level needs to be in good repair for our city for many reasons. So um yeah, so because it doesn't include the failed, I mean, this budget would be interesting to, to compare it. Um we'll also, I'm just wondering, are there any government or grant opportunities for any portion of this? I, I don't know.
They're mostly residential.
Yeah, it's mostly residential. I don't know if, um, so the OPWC applications were just submitted la, um last week. I'm not sure if a street repair program would score high enough.
I'd ask.
I mean, we can always look and try.
Okay.
Um my past projects, we haven't done a, a street repair program. It's usually sewer and, you know, includes road, but it's not just the road. So.
So before, oh, I just had a couple of questions.
Thank you. I, I think I'll really have to digest this and compare it to what you bring back. Um so I'm looking forward to that.
Yeah, before I call in, Mr. Cooney, can you just tell everybody, what are the county roads in the city?
Um so Sillsby, Warrensville Center Road, South Green, South Belvoir, and Cedar, and I think South Taylor, yeah.
Or, I didn't realize South Belvoir was a county road.
Yeah. So we are doing um crack sealing on it, cuz we did get county maintenance money for that one this year. It's in this year's program.
Okay, Mr. Cooney?
Thank you. Um when I, we asked for the information and we got it, um which, which is good. Um I understand looking at the numbers that, you know, to either maintain or improve, they're significant. Then you're gonna throw in the cost of the curbs. And the way you're kind of describing it earlier is the uh we should be, we should be using this as a tool for maintenance to try to extend the life of the roads. And so, and this, I don't, I'm not asking for an answer right now from, you know, Mr. Mr. Pennington, but you know, we should be setting up a maintenance program. We should be setting up a schedule. Uh are the resources available, whether it's equipment or, or labor? You know, these are things we need to be taken into consideration now that we have the information, where we're looking at whether it's budget twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight. Because the maintenance is gonna essentially kind of fall upon Mr. Pennington and his crew. And we do have some limitations there, but we need to understand like what those are and what, what do they need?
Right.
Because if we can extend the life, we're playing catch-up. We, we've been playing catch-up since twenty-twenty. There, we're just, we're not getting where we need to be. So thank you for the information. But I guess I would kind of um just ask Mr. Pennington, as we approached the twenty-six, twenty-seven, what resources do the service department need in order to help with the maintenance schedule, a plan, so we can address the areas that are needed? I, I, I do hear like the street, like a failed street, like that is, that's concerning. That's concerning, but I'm, I'm glad we have it. But now we just have to do something about it. Well, thank you.
Mr. Rock?
I, I just want to ask more about this failed street. So my colleague Ms. Sax asked about the grant opportunities for resurfacing, but we're talking about replace.
Yeah.
The whole road replacement.
Right, so we might be able to do a couple of those and try to get some funding or some the OPWC comes in um no-interest loans or grants. So that comes around once a year.
And then um back when GPD did this report years ago, he had given a, a cost differential between resurfacing and full replacement. And we had never entertained replacement before, because we just hadn't gotten to that point.
Right.
Sounds like we're getting to that point. And that's something we're really gonna have to entertain. Could you just, you know,
Yeah.
I have an answer now, but let us know, like, what, what, how much more is, is it four X, five X? I, I just want to understand the magnitude.
Sure. Okay, I'll bring that.
That makes sense.
That makes sense, what I'm asking.
I'm taking notes, so I will, I will come back with that, uh, an idea what that cost would be for full rehabilitation, replacement.
And then, um, I would imagine we would not entertain a full replacement if there's still yet to do water line replacement or any of that type of infrastructure under the road. We're talking about doing sewers eventually, you know, is, could the next sewer project be on a failed street? So I know that's gonna have all coordinated.
Yeah, you, bigger projects, more funding opportunities too.
Yeah, oh, Ms. Marshall?
What Mr. Rock just said made good sense, because North Cliff is a failed street, and it's supposed to be getting the water repaired. So that street still would have had to wait anyway.
Well, I think, um, we haven't decided yet, but, I mean, if we're gonna go forward with the water replacement, so the water replacement, they'll repair that trench over your water main. So you're gonna have like one strip of really good pavement down that street. So it might be a good time to consider looking at finishing North Cliff. Or even either a combined project or follow-up, like have the water contractor come in and do their work, and then have a street contractor come in and finish up. You know, you might have less, we might have less base repairs that we, we could, we could do a base repair and then just overlay with asphalt on top of it.
And it's a really short street.
Yeah, it's not too long.
Yeah, Ms. Sax?
Thank you. I have a practical question. So this is going to committee to have more in-depth discussion. How much time do you need to prepare this?
Oh, um, well, like I said, we're going back out this week, and once we do the inspections, to put the information back into the program, it's pretty quick, and then we'll revise the report. So that's the one thing, if we, if we do do inspections again in three or five years, we have like, we're cutting down on steps of what we have to do. You know, we don't have to, he started by, we started by creating a, a map of the whole city and breaking down the streets into sections that made sense for projects, you know, from intersections to intersections. And then there was a lot of background information when it was last worked on and length with all that type of stuff. So all that is already in
Couple of weeks.
Yeah, so a couple of weeks.
Brenda, you mentioned it's OPWC?
Yeah, Ohio Public Works Commission.
So when are those grants available?
So they come out, well, they were due September eleventh at, by four-thirty. So that was last week. So usually there's a, there's a workshop in the middle of the summer that just kind of goes over any updates in the program. And then, um, they, and then they're open. I, I don't know if it has like a specific open date, but.
And is there, what's the range of a grant that's available? Do you know?
No, so we applied for a couple in some of our other cities. And we have some projects under construction that has OPWC money. And one of our projects is like three million. Another one is just a little over a million and a half. And then we've had some really big ones that were like, for me, six or seven million dollars. But that was like sewer, water, pavement.
And are their grants matching? Like, how do they structure it?
Well, you decide. So you're scored. So if you take a grant, if you take, um, if you try to get, take a grant, you might get less points, but then if you take the loan, and then how much of the loan do you take? Do you take a ten, like a twenty percent loan, or do you take a thirty, forty, you know? So there's like, we have a spreadsheet that we usually use with our other cities, and we show them, like, a number of categories go into the ranking. So depending on where you stand on the base, then we start looking at the financing, and then what gives you your best score, depending on.
Some of the considerations are how many people it serves.
Yeah.
Residential street, you're gonna get less points. And if there's some commercial facility that attracts a lot of people from outside the city, joint projects with other communities, gets you extra points. If there's support letters, institutions that it may.
Is it a safety concern, or, you know, or, you know? So there's different, so some of our projects that we've done have been sewer separation projects. So those are, you know, sanitary water getting into the, like, lake area. So, you know, that's a, those ones usually score kind of high.
Okay, and then two more questions, and then I, I want to discuss committee. So in a perfect world, when do you bring the street repair program to city council for approval? And how long does it take for the bidding process? And what month, like month-wise? So obviously, we need to understand what streets we're gonna do for the budget. So that's, you know, December, but what's, when do we ideally want to start the street report, repair program?
The earlier we can start it, because we do some fieldwork. We send out our surveyor, and he goes and takes a look at all these streets. Maybe some of our fieldwork is now, um, we can rely on this report a little bit. But he still goes out and he looks at manholes. He looks at catch basins. He looks at curbs. He looks to try to get a ballpark idea of what needs fixed. You know, um, we, we usually do manhole reconstructions or casting adjustments. He locates the trees, because, you know, we avoid those curbs with the large trees. And he locates all the dry aprons, so that we know if we are doing curbs, what's our total length of curb we're doing on the street? So we do do some like reconnaissance and some survey work, and then we generate plans. Once we get our plans together, you know, we get our quantities, our spec book, and then we can be ready to go out to bid. So the sooner that I get the okay on the budget and get the project set up, the sooner we can start. We like to do that in the early, like, winter, early spring, so that we can be ready to go in the summer.
Okay, so the summer is when you want the projects to be done?
Or at least go to construction to get, yeah.
Construction.
But the earlier the.
Yeah. You got more contractors that bid. I mean, we had a number of contractors that bid on our project this year, but they were looking at it, I think, as a late-season project, so.
So I, I definitely think this needs to go to committee very soon, especially because our budget process is starting.
Yes.
Um, and we need to understand how we want to rate those streets and, you know, et cetera, and then going forward to the cost. So, um, you know, I, I'm thinking it could really even go into the finance committee, not service and utilities, just because. Because you have a lot of things. So what we could do is, um, just have one meeting just in finance, just streets, and then that will be separate from when the directors, you know, all present their budgets. So if everyone's okay with that, I can, we can refer this to the finance committee, and we can get a, you need a few weeks, two or three weeks to get the rest of the information in. So within the next, you know, I would say, three to four weeks, we can get a meeting together. And then go from there, if that sounds okay with everyone. So I would, um, make a motion to refer, um, well, I guess, do we have to? Because it's just a review and a discussion? We don't have to make them?
No, I, I'm just taking it for this time.
Okay, so I will get, I will get that call out and.
Okay, that would be good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Brenda.
Okay, um, item, letter D, ordinance twenty-two-five-JS-43, enacting a moratorium on sidewalk repair and replacement citations and enforcement actions and declaring an emergency. Ms. Weiser?
This was discussed in the building and housing meeting. This came about because council at the last building and housing meeting talked about potentially coming up with a program to either assist residents or to find a way to help decrease the cost of repairs, especially where city trees have caused an issue with, um, sidewalks rising and not being level. And at that initial meeting last month, um, the director, the housing director did indicate she was willing to adopt a moratorium. Well, we tried to get a program sort of laid out. And at the mayor's recommendation, um, he felt it would be better to do it formally in an ordinance. We recommended that this be approved, uh, tonight. So I would make a motion to approve ordinance twenty-two-five dash forty-three.
We have to.
On emergency, but, well, yeah, a motion to suspend the rules first.
I'll second. Um, Ms. Ruben, we call the roll?
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Sax?
Aye.
Mr. Cooney?
Aye.
Ms. Wise?
Aye.
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Ms. Marshall?
Aye.
Ms. Weiser? Aye. Then I'll make a motion to approve ordinance twenty-two-five dash forty-three on emergency, enacting a moratorium on sidewalk and replace, repair and replacement citations and enforcement actions.
I'll second that. Ms. Ruben, we call the roll?
Hey, Mr. King?
Aye.
Mr. Ms. Sax?
Aye.
Mr. Cooney?
Aye.
Ms. Wise?
Aye.
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Ms. Marshall?
Aye.
Ms. Wise? Aye.
And thank you for bringing this to committees, and thank you, Ms. Davis, as well. Um, letter E, this ordinance twenty-two-five dash forty-four was discussed in the last committee meeting and was referred to get tabled, because more work needs to be done. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second? Second by Ms. Marshall? Any discussion? Ms. Ruben, we call the roll?
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Sax?
Aye.
Mr. Cooney?
Aye.
Ms. Wise?
Aye.
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Ms. Marshall?
Aye.
Ms. Weiser? Aye.
And the same thing with letter F. This was referred to be tabled, ordinance twenty-two-five dash forty-five. Is there any discussion on this?
Yes.
Ms. Wise?
The reason we've decided to table this is there is some clarifications we're looking for in terms of, um, are we going to use the federal number or the county HUD number in terms of income? And what percentage of it do we feel would fit for our residents? Because our median income tends to be fairly high. And this particular grant program does allow residents to apply for a grant for repairs of citations that are issued under the exterior inspection program. So until we can get those clarified, and hopefully we get them clarified by the next meeting, we decided to table it, refer it back to committee, and I would so move.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Hey, Ms. Ruben, you call the roll?
Thank you.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Sax?
Aye.
Mr. Cooney?
Aye.
Ms. Wise?
Aye.
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Ms. Marshall?
Aye.
Ms. Weiser? Aye.
Hey, letter G, motion to enter into, excuse me, to your contact with the Cuyahoga County Board of Health for twenty-twenty-six and twenty-twenty-seven. Would like to discuss this.
I can say a few words about it. Uh, every, under the Ohio Vice Code, the, uh, every municipality is required to have either its own board of health or a contract with a board of health for board of health services for that particular municipality. Here in University Heights, really here in Cuyahoga County, the city of Cleveland has its own board of health, and every other community in Cuyahoga County uses the Cuyahoga County Board of Health. That is what the University Heights has been doing. Uh, it is, uh, far, uh, less expensive for us to contract with the Cuyahoga County Board of Health than it is to establish and operate our own board of health. Every two years, we have a new contract that comes up, and, um, the pricing goes up a little bit every year, but this is in line with what we've had. Services are in line with what we use and what we've historically used. And the pricing, though, up is, uh, appropriate to inflationary times and just fact that costs of things generally go up. So, um, the alternative, of course, is that we, uh, open our own board of health, which I do not recommend, and would ask that we, uh, I would ask for the approval, uh, that we enter this two-year contract with the County Board of Health. We have till the end of the calendar year. So if you want to take more time to look at it, you don't have to approve it tonight. But, uh, but the sooner we do, then the sooner we can go ahead and get this squared away with the County Board of Health and get the figures into next year's budget. Thank you.
Yeah, there any questions? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Hey, Ms. Ruben, we call the roll?
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Sax?
Aye.
Mr. Cooney?
Aye.
Ms. Wise?
Aye.
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Ms. Marshall?
Aye.
Ms. Weiser? Aye.
Thank you.
Hey, letter H, motion to approve advert, excuse me, motion to approve the advertising for the twenty-two-five tree maintenance program. Mr. Pennington?
Yes, thank you, Vice Mayor. As in previous years, we are looking to go out to bid for our annual tree pruning and removal contract. This year, we have approximately thirty-nine trees slated for removal with another significant amount of trees getting their annual trimming and, and clearing. The contract this year differs slightly from previous years in that we did put in a requirement for notification of the property owners in advance of the, the work, as a requirement of the contractor to notify them a minimum of seven days prior to the work. So we, we are asking at this time to, uh, go out for, to bid for the twenty-two-five tree maintenance program.
I appreciate you sending out those notices. I know that was requested in the past. Are there any questions? Ms. Weiser?
I have a question. If a resident calls and wants a tree taken out, do we do that? Do we add that to the list?
What we do is we look at the trees that are on there. I have the arborist take a look at the particular tree. We will not remove the healthy trees. In many cases, the residents are asking for a healthy tree or a tree that they, they feel is not as aesthetically pleasing, and they ask for that tree to be removed. For our purpose of trying to maintain the tree canopy, if the arborist deems the tree is a tree that should not be removed, we do not remove that tree.
So if they ask for it to be removed because it's damaging the sidewalk, we do not remove it if it's healthy?
If it's a healthy tree, we do not.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions? Hey, is there a motion for the tree maintenance program?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Ms. Ruben, we call the roll?
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Sax? Mr. Cooney?
Aye.
Ms. Wise?
Aye.
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Ms. Marshall?
Aye.
Ms. Weiser? Aye.
And we do, for letter I, have a motion to approve advertising for the twenty-two-five fall tree planting program.
Yes, similar to the tree removal program, we are looking to go out to bid for the, uh, planting of trees with the, uh, the tree planting program. Uh, this year, there are, based upon the, the amount of trees we had removed in last year's program and other requests for new trees on tree lawns from residents, we have approximately a hundred and fifty-five trees slated for planting in the coming year. Again, similarly to the, uh, the tree removal program, this would also have a requirement for the contractor to notify residents in advance of the tree planting, so that they are made aware, uh, prior to a tree being planted on their tree lawn that said works is going to occur.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Pennington? Yeah, Ms. Weiser?
If a resident does not want a tree on their tree lawn, do we plant?
We do not.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. King, second by Ms. Sax. Ms. Ruben, we call the roll?
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Sax?
Aye.
Mr. Cooney?
Aye.
Ms. Wise?
Aye.
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Ms. Marshall?
Aye.
Ms. Weiser? Aye.
Okay, we are now to letter J, resolution twenty-two-five dash forty-six, the two thousand twenty-six tax rates. Hey, we're now to letter J, resolution 2025 dash 46, the 2026 tax rates.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. This is a housekeeping measure that you pass each year. These rates were confirmed by Cuyahoga County Budget Commission, and they're based on the tax budget that was passed in July. So this reviews that information that was submitted with the tax budget, and they ask that we confirm their confirmation. We're just confirming it all and send this back to them by the end of the month.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Ms. Ikones? Hey, is there a motion to pass resolution 2025 dash 46?
So moved.
Motion by, or approved by Ms. Weiser, second by Ms. Sax. Ms. Rubin, will you call the roll?
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mrs. Sax?
Aye.
Mr. Cooney?
Aye.
Ms. Weiss?
Aye.
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Ms. Marshall?
Aye.
Ms. Weiser?
Aye.
And we are now on to letter K. Mr. Brian, if you want to discuss that motion?
It's a motion to authorize Beachwood Prosecutor Natalie Supler to handle the Stowe versus Grand prosecution, Shaker Heights Municipal Court, case number 2025 CRB 00669, on behalf of the city of University Heights due to a conflict of interest of the part of the University Heights prosecutor, and to authorize Ms. Supler to be paid at the rate of $175 per hour for any time preparing for or conducting a jury trial in the case, if that is necessary. And again, that was, that's the same amount of money that would be paid to Mr. Cicero if the case went to scheduled and jury trial occurred.
Thank you, Ms. Weiser?
Could we request a executive session to find out what this is about?
It's a criminal prosecution against Mr. Grant, who has a lawsuit, pending lawsuit against the city. And so, there's issues with us handling it while we're being sued. And the other complication is, Mr. McConville is a party that's being sued in that case, and he is a law partner of Mr. Cicero. So, Ms. Supler has agreed, as happens a lot, to handle this or nothing unless it goes to a jury trial. But we want to formally prove it, so there's not an argument as to whether she's authorized to handle the case on behalf of the city. So that's the reason we're doing this.
So what I'm understanding is it's a completely separate matter, nothing to do with the city, we just don't want any conflict of interest. Is that correct?
Yes.
Well, it's a prosecutor, the city's, you know, police report was filed.
But nothing to do with anything else?
You have an independent prosecutor handling it.
Ms. Weiser, is that sufficient, or do you still want an executive session?
Very confused.
Did you want to know what the charges were, is that?
Pardon?
Did you want to know what the charges were, is that what this is?
Yeah, it's sort of like bam, you know, we're asked to approve money for a trial that the city isn't actively involved in and, and yet no.
Is that previous notice?
The last few days where incident happened and he was charged. So it's not costing the city any more money, because if it went to a jury trial, we'd be paying Mr. Cicero at the same rate. So it's, it's just depends what happens in the case. So it's the same costs the city would be incurring anyway. It's just authorizing them to be paid to the outside prosecutor rather than Mr. Cicero. Any other questions, Ms. Weiser?
Ms. Sax, did you have something?
I think it does need an executive session, I think we're dancing around what it is.
It's.
I, I don't know, and I don't know if this is appropriate or we'd go in an executive session.
Public records.
Okay.
Look it up, the Shaker Court, he was charged with domestic violence and domestic menacing.
Ms. Marshall?
So, if I'm understanding this, the only thing that, that, that you're, the reason we're trying to get this approved is because it's a conflict of interest for our prosecutor to work on the case, because he's currently being sued by that person.
His law partner is, and the city's being sued.
Okay.
We don't want to be accused in the course of the prosecution that we're biased or have any sort of alternative interest other than handling the case in usual, usual manner for prosecution.
And so if the prosecutor was going through with the case, it, it wouldn't be a need to come to us for anything. The only reason that you come into council is because we need to switch the person.
Right. And in the past, in these types of situations, defendants have argued that the person replacing our prosecutor wasn't properly appointed, so they didn't have the authority to prosecute him. And that's been raised on appeal in different cases. So we want to just avoid that issue from coming up later.
Okay.
On our basis to say, you know, she could say she was authorized by city council to handle the case.
Okay, so, if that clarifies everything, is there a motion to authorize to appoint the Beachwood prosecutor to handle the case? Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Weiser, Ms. Rubin, will you call the roll?
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mrs. Sax?
Aye.
Mr. Cooney?
Aye.
Ms. Weiss?
Aye.
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Ms. Marshall?
Aye.
Ms. Weiser?
Aye.
Hey, is there a need for an executive session? Hey, we're now on to standing committees, building and housing.
Basically, we met tonight, and the results of our meeting were announced when we covered all the different ordinances we talked about. Our next meeting, we're going to be continuing to talk about sidewalks and potential sidewalk programs. Ms. Davis, the housing director, has agreed to give us additional information, which will be handy in helping us decide if there's a way the city can help to defray the cost of sidewalk damage that is caused by city trees or city work. And also, maybe doing a nudge to see if we could get a program where the cracked sidewalk repair could be grouped together, and the city can go out for bids, and that way, the residents would have a lower cost if they agreed to participate in the program. So that is continuing on, our next meeting will be at six o'clock. We have a standing committee that meets at six o'clock before the second council meeting of each month. There also is going to be a joint committee with service and utilities. We are continuing to work through the weeds ordinance. There is a gentleman that has given us a rather, he did a rather extensive look through the ordinance, and we found a lot of his comments were very valid. We started to talk about some potential changes. And then we have, I believe, another expert coming in also at some point to talk to us about some potential things that we need to look at as well. So that meeting will be on October 22nd.
Twenty-third.
Twenty-two.
Twenty-three.
Twenty-three, October 23rd. Twenty-third. Okay.
Thank you.
Going once, going twice.
No, one of those days, yeah, one of those days, Sherri.
Community outreach, Mr. King?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. This past Friday, I met with the clerks of council, and councilwoman, when Weiser observed, I performed training for the clerks of council on how to create the meetings for city council and our committee meetings, planning commission, et cetera. So, the meetings this evening were created by them, and hope is going forward that the clerks of council will be creating those meetings and not myself, that I will be out of the business of creating the meetings. Additionally, the purchase order for the new Teams Room camera, we had a motion to approve that last time, our last meeting, that purchase order has been approved by the mayor, and Starfish is ordering it and will update me when it will, when it's expected to arrive, and will coordinate with getting it installed. That concludes my report, thank you.
Yeah, Mr. King, just one thing I was just asking, since we are coming into budget season, if we could possibly have that meeting, because in terms of fiber optics, I know that you were trying to schedule one a couple months ago, and for whatever reason that wasn't, it's just, it's a cost that we have to research and, and look through.
Not sure how that would factor into the budget.
Well, we need to understand what the city needs in terms of future strategic planning with that, and how much that will cost, so we can understand the whole cost impact on the city.
Okay, we will talk offline on that, thank you.
Hey, economic development?
Yes, thank you, we had a meeting last, two weeks ago, on September 3rd, for the zoning, comprehensive zoning code revisions. We had a pretty good conversation, a lot of residents had showed up to that meeting and gave their feedback. I had provided the committee's feedback based on comments by ZoneCo in their matrix, handed that to our law director, who's giving that to the administration. That did go through, right, to administration? Okay, I'll resend that. Since the administration's working hand to hand with ZoneCo, as they should, the committee will work with the law director to disseminate that information over to the administration. We decided that we will do a standing meeting once a month. As we look at the revised zoning code revisions, there was a couple drafts that had been drafted since we started looking at the districts. We are going to meet on the second Monday of each month. The next meeting that we will have is October the 13th. Does, which happens to be Columbus Day, does the city recognize Columbus Day as a holiday?
We do not.
Okay, well, then we will hold a meeting that day at six o'clock.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Rock.
I think there might have been a conflict with a religious holiday, and I, it was expressed that the meetings still go on, correct, Vice Mayor?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. I think we, we will have a quorum.
Hey, finance, as I mentioned before, we will have within the next four weeks, a finance meeting to discuss streets in preparation for the budget. We will also, since I was planning a finance meeting anyways, a quarterly report, as we, as we typically do. Recreation?
Thank you. Next recreation committee meeting is scheduled for October 29th, which should allow for, hopefully, the results of the leak test that was to be performed, but also looking at the infrastructure for the pool and resources that may be needed to help plan for the budget season, also inner repairs that could take place this year as well, so, October 29th.
Thank you. Safety?
No report, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, and service and utilities?
So we heard about the joint committee, no report right now, thank you.
Okay, thank you. And committee of the whole, there is no report. Are there any reports of special committees in taking of action thereon? And is there any unfinished business?
I, I just have a question, is, is there a safety committee meeting coming up?
The, the regular scheduled one on October 6th, yeah.
Okay, will you be taking up the, the ordinance on the?
I'll let you know, when I do have all of that information, I'll send it out to everyone.
On emergency medical service? Okay.
Would that be?
What'd you say, by October 6th?
It'll be October 9th.
9th.
That's the next regularly, that will be the first, it's on Thursday.
It was October 6th.
Let's move for a holiday.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, is there a motion to adjourn?
Well, I, I think we need a.
Wait, so it's moved to October 9th on a Thursday?
Yeah, that, that was on the original notice, yeah. Yeah, I just want to be sure that we're timely taking up this, this, this measure that the fire department is anxious to see dealt with.
So.
We'll talk about a quorum.
I'll be.
Okay, good, okay, great.
Okay, so, the committee members are, the committee head is in charge of her committee. She makes the agenda. She will get that out when she has discussed it with the fire chief and the police chief. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll move.
I'll second.
See?
Second by Mr. Rock, Ms. Rubin, will you call the roll?
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mrs. Sax?
Aye.
Mr. Cooney?
Aye.
Ms. Weiss?
Aye.
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Ms. Marshall?
Aye.
Ms. Weiser?
Aye.
I thank everybody for coming.